Okay, this is seven. Test, test. And the music would be eight, right?
Yeah.
Testing. Okay, testing. One, two, one, two. How about the voice you got? Test, test. Okay, this is seven. Test, test. And the music would be eight, right?
Yeah.
Testing. Okay, testing. One, two, one, two. How about the voice you got? Test, test. So... Do you know where they're going?
Yes, they already know.
They know what side of the stage they're going to, whether they're taking a picture with stairs, they're coming up and which stairs we're going down?
They're gonna come up these stairs. And when they come off, they're gonna go down.
So David's gonna get into the board here and walk all the way across the stage?
Yep.
Okay. And where's he sitting?
Right here.
Come up here, he's gonna get... I'm gonna step to the side.
He's on the side. That's better.
I don't know that anybody wants to just walk across the stage and then walk across the room.
Ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. The program is about to begin. Ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. The program is about to begin. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us. At the NAACP Legal Defense and Educational Fund celebrates the 65th anniversary of Brown v. Board of Education. Please welcome LDF President and Director Counsel Cheryl Ann Eiffel.
Thank you Samantha. And thank you to all of you for coming out to share this important day with us. I was sharing earlier that this day, it feels really important this year that we celebrate Brown versus Board of Education. So it means so much to me that you all are here. I want to be sure to acknowledge some of the folks who came out today to be with us. And we're going to get to our program in a minute, but you know, when you don't do these things right at the beginning, then you forget. So I'm going to do it now. I want to first acknowledge the presence of Joan Anderson. Joan Anderson is the daughter of Leon and Beulah Anderson, who were plaintiffs in the Delaware Brown case, Belton versus Gebhardt. And it was consolidated into the group of cases that became Brown versus Board of Education. And she was the first to integrate public schools in Delaware, Joan Anderson. Civil rights work is a group effort. No one organization does it alone. And I'm so pleased and proud to have colleagues who stand with us in this important work, some of whom are here today. I see Vanita Gupta, who is a former LDF attorney in her own right, but also CEO and President of the Leadership Conference on Civil and Human Rights, and just a dear colleague in this work. We're also joined by someone who has become a dear colleague to me, Farhana Kira, who's the Executive Director of Muslim Advocates. And it has been our honor to do work shoulder to shoulder with Muslim advocates over the past two years. I believe I also see Andrea Centeno, who is the Regional Counsel for the Washington DC office of our sister organization, the Mexican-American Legal Defense Fund. Andrea. And I think those are my other civil rights colleagues that I see. I see that we're also joined by the woman who is incubating the next few generations of civil rights lawyers, the Dean of Howard Law School, Danielle Holly Walker. We're also joined by a number of LDF board members, which always pleases me. We have such a terrific and supportive board, including Steve Pfeifer, partner at Norton Philbright, Michael Klein, Greg Evans, Judy Byrd. And I thi-- is Ellie Applewhite here? No? Yes, where? And of course David Kendall, but you all will meet him later. All right. So I'm, as I said, so pleased to have you all join us today. I'm really grateful for the opportunity to spend a couple of hours in this setting, recognizing one of the most consequential cases in the history of our nation. I think sometimes we take for granted the new world that Brown created every day. And so I think it's important for this one day that we pause and acknowledge all that Brown represents. To my mind, it represents the triumph of the rule of law over injustice, the triumph of brilliant lawyers over a legal system that was designed to keep them as second-class citizens. Brown represents the triumph of discipline, strategy, creativity, and bold lawyering over tradition, custom, and the long grip of white supremacy. Brown represents the triumph of justice and equality, and it represents American democracy at its noblest moment. I've learned over the past year that I should never assume that people understand the significance of Brown. Even well-meaning people can get it wrong. Yes, the Supreme Court in Brown announced that segregation in public education is unconstitutional, but that's only the smallest reading of the significance of that case. I've been writing a lot about Brown this past week, and I think we have copies of some of my op-- hey, hello. Copies of some of my pieces available for you. And I've been driven to write these pieces because I've been so distressed by the way in which people appear not to understand the significance of Brown. And I think that we really must recognize the ways in which Brown shifted the trajectory of American democracy. In fact, I always say that American democracy did not and could not be said to have truly begun until Brown versus Board of Education. One prominent judge once described Brown as vindicating what the equal protection of the 14th Amendment was supposed to mean, which was to guarantee equal rights to people of all races. It's interesting that the judge who said that was then on the Third Circuit Court of Appeals, and it was Samuel Alito at his confirmation hearing for a seat on the United States Supreme Court. He could say that because there used to be a consensus within the legal profession among lawyers, both on the right and the left, that the Brown decision was central to the very soul of American democracy. That consensus has been called into question recently, as several dozen judicial nominees over the last year have refused to answer the simple question, was the Brown case correctly decided? Fortunately, those in this room, those of us in this room, understand the importance of Brown, and today we're gathering to celebrate this decision. We always lift up the brilliant decades-long work and strategy of the LDF lawyers who litigated Brown. And could any, everyone who is or ever has been, even briefly, an LDF lawyer, could you raise your hand? I'm privileged to work with the most extraordinary array of lawyers and advocates. And so we always try to lift them up, I do. We celebrate the tenacity and vision of our founder, Thurgood Marshall, of the masterful litigation skills of Robert Carter, and Spotswood Robinson, and Oliver Hill, and Liam Ransum, and Ms. Anderson's counsel, Lou Redding, and James Nabrit, and Constance Baker Motley, and Jack Greenberg, our Second Director Counsel, and so many others. But today, we decided to devote our Brown commemoration, not to the lawyers who litigated Brown, or to the Supreme Court that decided the case, today we've decided to devote our Brown celebration to the clients, the extraordinary courageous young people whose families took the step of allowing their children to become integrators. In particular, today we are celebrating the young girls, now women, who were so very often the children chosen to lead these integration efforts as the first black students to enter segregated Southern schools. When we very much drew from the recent book that you may have heard about, Rachel Devlin's A Girl Stands in the Door, which is a wonderful book about these girls. What they faced was often unimaginable hostility, isolation, loneliness, and cruelty. How they confronted those conditions with courage, poise, humor, and a sense of enormous responsibility and pride in their families and communities must be recognized and celebrated. These children, and these women, are, to my mind, true American patriots. Available today, which I think is going to be outside, is a wonderful new book called Recovering Untold Stories: An Enduring Legacy of Brown versus Board of Education. And the book is a collection of essays written by the children of the parent plaintiffs in the Brown cases. As I say in the foreword to that book, "The lonely walk of so many of the children as they took those first steps into hostile territory of white schools has never been adequately explored, and this book is an important contribution to telling these untold stories." And today we'll honor four of those girls who were integrators in cases before and after Brown. We're thrilled that we'll have the chance to be part of a conversation with these extraordinary women moderated by Pulitzer Prize-winning author Isabel Wilkerson, the author of the groundbreaking, sweeping, compelling book, The Warmth of Other Suns. And today we'll confer LDF's first-ever Distinguished Alumni Award on David Kendall, Senior Counsel at Williams &amp; Connolly, and a longtime LDF board member. I'm thrilled to hear that DC Mayor Muriel Bowser has sent a representative from her office, Ebony Scott, with a proclamation, and I would ask her to come forward now and read that proclamation. Ebony Scott.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is afternoon, right? Okay, okay, thank you. My name is Ebony Scott, and I serve as Legal Counsel to Mayor Muriel Bowser. And I am here today on behalf of the mayor, who sends her deepest regrets, but also her sincere gratitude for the invitation to such an extraordinary event. Mayor Bowser has made clear her deep commitment to leveling the playing field. And she knows that one way to accomplish this is to ensure excellence at all educational levels through every inch and every ward in our city, so that our youth are prepared for college and for 21st century careers. We know now, as you knew then, that education is really the great equalizer. And while I'm so sorry that the mayor cannot be here, I must say that I am truly delighted that I get to be here. My village taught me that education is the one thing that no one can ever take away from you. And as the first person and my immediate family to obtain a graduate degree, I know firsthand how doors that were once closed to people of color can be opened by education. Because of the honorees who are gathered here today, and I'm fortunate enough to sit at the table with many of them, and the monumental first steps that they took to demand equality both in the classroom and in the voting booth, someone like me grew up and believed that I could reach my dreams. And so behalf, on behalf of the mayor, I would like to say thank you to today's honorees. And with that, I will present them with the following proclamation. The proclamation is dated May 17, 2019, and it states as follows. Whereas today, the NAACP Legal Defense and Educational Fund celebrates the 65th anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education. Whereas the NAACP Legal Defense and Educational Fund is the nation's first civil and human rights law organization that has endeavored to achieve racial justice and realize the promise of equality for all. And whereas the struggle to secure educational equity and integrate our nation's schools has been essential to making the ideals of our democracy a reality for all. And whereas the sacrifice of the young women and girls who were early integrators of their Southern schools were integral to the US Supreme Court empathetically declaring separate but equal inherently unequal in the unanimous opinion in Brown versus Board of Education. 65 years ago. And whereas the NAACP Legal Defense and Educational Fund is honored to present its Pioneer of Justice Award to Elizabeth Eckford, Doris Fay Jennings Austin, Doris Ray Jennings Brewer, and Leona Tate for their outstanding contributions in spearheading the integration of the public school system in their respective communities. And the LDF Distinguished Alumni Award to David Kendall for his moral clarity and unfailing commitment to equal justice under the law. And whereas my administration, of course, not mine, but the mayor's, has been committed to being a champion of educational equity, and I applaud the NAACP Legal Defense and Educational Fund for its continued efforts in the fight for civil rights. Now, therefore, I, the mayor's designee of Washington DC, do hereby proclaim May 17, 2019, in Washington DC as the NAACP Legal Defense and Educational Fund Day. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Scott. So let's get into the program. Before we do, though, I want to do a couple of things. First, I want to make sure that we thank the terrific waitstaff from the local 25 who are serving us today. And that's kind of important, because I do want to talk about this room for a moment. It has kind of to do with Brown. Many of you know that Bill Coleman, William T. Coleman, was one of the most brilliant attorneys, bar none, of the 20th, and I think he even brought it into the 21st century. He was part of the brain trust of lawyers that Thurgood Marshall brought into the team to help strategize and work on Brown versus Board of Education. He was a law clerk in the days when there were not black law clerks, to Justice Felix Frankfurter. And he had a lifelong commitment to LDF and chaired our board for a number of years, was a distinguished law firm partner, and was also the first African-American Secretary of Transportation in the Ford administration. And Bill Coleman passed away last year, or maybe it's even the year before last at this point. But Bill Coleman tells a quite interesting story that's relevant to us sitting in this room and commemorating Brown. When he was a clerk for Felix Frankfurter, he was close friends with his fellow clerk, Elliot Richardson. Some of us old heads may remember Elliot Richardson as being a very, talk about moral clarity, a really important attorney in our sinking about presidential power, about what it means to stand up for the rule of law despite the pressure of the president. But when he was a young law clerk, he and Bill Coleman were best friends. And one day, the law clerks were working, and they all decided that they would go out for lunch together, treat themselves to lunch, they worked very hard, and they all wanted to come down here to the Mayflower Hotel to have lunch. Bill was still working on a document, and so he wanted to finish up. He told them, "Go ahead." Elliot Richardson said, "I'll wait with you." And Richardson disappeared for a little bit, then he came back, and then Bill finished up his work and assembled his papers and was ready to go. And Elliot Richardson said, "You know what? It's late, you know, they probably started already, we've taken a long time. Why don't we just go to Union Station instead and get something to eat?" And that's what they did. They went to Union Station to get something to eat. But Bill didn't learn until he returned to the office, and Richardson went in to speak with Justice Frank-- with Justice Frankfurter, that the reason that Richardson had suggested that they go to Union Station is because he called ahead and learned that the Mayflower Hotel in 1949 would not serve Black people. That didn't change in Washington, DC until the Thompson case in 1953. Sometimes, I think, when we travel about our days and participate in our lives, if you're in this room and you're sitting eating this marvelous chicken, then you're likely one of the people for whom America worked out, it worked out for you, and American democracy worked out for you. But it's important sometimes to pause and remember why it worked out for you. And I'm not just talking to Black people now, I'm talking to white people, I'm talking to women. I remind people all the time of LDF's work challenging in the Supreme Court on behalf of a white female client, the rule of Martin Marietta in the early 1970s, that they would not hire women who had preschool-aged children. We won that case in the Supreme Court. So if you're in corporate America, you're at your law firm, you have preschool-aged children, and you can't be barred from being hired, that's LDF. And so, we should remember in these moments how transformative this case was to the very lives that we lead, to the interactions that we have, to whether or not you could eat in an airport restaurant, to everything you did as you traveled on your way here today. And so, I'm actually glad we're here at the Mayflower Hotel having this lunch. But it's important that even as we do it, we remember and that we not take for granted the world that Brown overcame, that we not forget that one of the finest legal minds in our country, a clerk to a sitting Supreme Court Justice just 70 years ago, would have been barred from sitting at one of these tables and partaking of this lunch. We can't ever forget and take for granted the work and courage it took to overcome Jim Crow. We will never allow cynical lawyers to move the goalposts to try and force Brown to the margins, to break our consensus that Brown righted the listing ship of American democracy. And I hope that today, with today's program, you'll be inspired to fight harder, smarter, and relentlessly for true justice and greater equality. So I should say that one of the great things about the Legal Defense Fund is the team of leaders that have led this organization. We have had seven director councils, I'm the seventh, and we always say that we're one of the few places and organizations where all the leaders and former leaders all love each other and get along and support and help each other, and that means a great deal to me. But in LDF's tradition, we've always also been joined by someone who stands shoulder to shoulder with the director counsel, the associate director counsel. And I want to make sure that you know our associate director counsel today, Janaye Nelson. Janaye's an extraordinary partner in this work. But it's now my honor to introduce to you LDF's fifth president and director counsel, Ted Shaw. And Ted Shaw is here to help us pay tribute to one of our organization's greatest legends, Jean Fairfax. In our office this morning, we did a program about the work of Jean Fairfax, and she recently passed away at the age of 98. And I asked Ted to come and say a few words about her. Ted Shaw.
Thank you, and good afternoon. Thank you, Sherilyn. We have such a wonderful leader of LDF. This organization is in good hands and going places beyond where it has been because of Sherilyn. For 20 years, Jean Fairfax was widely regarded as one of the most influential and innovative leaders. Hired by Jack Greenberg, LDF's second director counsel, she founded and served as the director of LDF's Division of Legal Information and Community Services from 1965 to 1984. LDF's Division of Legal Information and Community Services, as a result of Jean's work and vision, advanced initiatives that have become permanent features of public policy landscape in Washington, DC. Jean shaped how we think about our government's obligations toward indigent children. If you've ever used as a measure of poverty the number of children who receive free or reduced free lunch, then you know of the work of Jean Fairfax. Jean's guiding principle was her sincere devotion to improving the lives of poor and working-class families. She listened. She learned the needs of the families whom she served, and she learned about the barriers they faced. And then she fought for policies that would offer the resources they needed to succeed. Jean understood how racism worked to depress opportunities for Black families, and she was clear-eyed about the need to focus on the system of policies and practices that could be adopted to address these needs and to create a level playing field for those most in need. I had the blessing of knowing Jean Fairfax well and working with her closely. I can't tell you how much Jean meant to me beyond saying that she was one of the most extraordinary individuals whom I've met in my lifetime. I wish each and every one of you had known her. She was one of the most extraordinary civil rights advocates and one of the most extraordinary Americans, period. I told the staff earlier that I neglected to do something today. I wore the wrong tie. Jean and I were working on a higher education case in Nashville, Tennessee, one day, and she turned to me and she said, she called me by my nickname when I was younger, she said, "Teddy, your ties are boring." And I said, "Jean, I'm not sure what you're talking about." She said, "I'm taking you shopping." And she took me and bought a paisley tie. I wore ties that looked like this. I still have that tie, I should have worn it today. But that's the smallest way in which she impacted me. She was a mentor, like a family member and a friend. One of my most cherished memories was that a couple of years ago, Sherilyn and I took the opportunity, and Elaine, and Elaine Jones. So it was three of the directors counsel, and we visited her in Phoenix at her home. What a moment it was, what a time it was, what a day it was. I cherish that memory for the rest of my life. I loved her dearly, and I know that because you love LDF, even if you never met her, you loved her too. And so, we lift up the memory of Jean Fairfax, and we're grateful for the work that she did for LDF, for the people LDF served, and for our country. Thank you.
... another life well-lived. The Supreme Court's unanimous decision in the 1954 case of Brown versus the Board of Education of Topeka ruled that segregation in public schools was unconstitutional. Not everyone in America was so happy to comply, but Jean Fairfax spent her career making sure they did. An educator and civil rights activist, Fairfax encouraged African-American families to exercise their children's basic right to go to school. In a famous 1964 case, Fairfax personally escorted six-year-old first grader Deborah Lewis as she integrated Carthage Elementary School in Mississippi. Deborah's father was fired from his job because of it, and the family's home was firebombed, but Deborah went to school. Years later, a streak in Carthage was named in her honor. In 1965, Fairfax joined the NAACP Legal Defense Fund, where she worked until 1984, enforcing desegregation, fighting institutional discrimination, and steering federal money into poor Black communities that needed it with initiatives like the National School Lunch Program. Fairfax grew up in Cleveland with parents who were the first in their family born legally free. She graduated from the University of Michigan 5A to Kappa and became the dean of women at two different colleges, including the Tuskegee Institute. In a 1984 interview with the Christian Science Monitor, Fairfax said of the vulnerable people she spent her life helping, "The greatest experience of my life was standing with them as they took the risks." Jean Fairfax, who helped to push America forward in the face of strong resistance, died last month in Phoenix. She was 98 years old.
As we commemorate the 65th anniversary of Brown, I'm proud to celebrate tonight, this afternoon, a few extraordinary individuals whose courage and sacrifice were essential to advancing the goals of racial justice and equality for all. This year's honorees have proven that the fight for equality is hard, but it is necessary. From ensuring that the lives of African-Americans are fairly represented in our criminal justice system to guaranteeing that students of color have access to high-quality educational opportunities, our honorees have fought fearlessly and unrelentingly for racial justice. So, please join me in saluting their pivotal contributions to the struggle for civil rights. It is now my honor to introduce this afternoon's first honoree and recipient of LDF's Distinguished Alumni Award, David E. Kendall. David has had a remarkable career, truly. He has the distinction of being among what I think is a very small coterie of LDF attorneys and board members who also were clients of the organization. David's first interaction with the legal system was when he was arrested several times in Mississippi during Freedom Summer while registering people to vote. And that sounds fairly tame, but he was arrested a lot. And I read a speech that David gave in 1999 where he talked about how LDF lawyers had prepared the students of Freedom Summer and told them what to do. They had like a little card, "What to do if you're arrested in Mississippi," and David saved the card. And one of the things LDF said on the card, is the kind of vintage thing LDF would say, which is, you know, "If you resist arrest, you can lawfully be arrested. That's a real charge. And so, it's probably best to go quietly if they're going to arrest you." And so, David said the following. "So go quietly, I did that summer, about a dozen times in all, on charges raging from loitering to suspicion of car theft to investigation to criminal syndicalism. We beat the rap every time except once when my LDF mouthpieces advised me to plead guilty to driving without an inspection sticker since they had me cold on that one. Once in Holly Springs," he said, "they choreographed every step of my arrest to test the constitutionality of a new Mississippi anti-picketing law, pinning a small index card on my T-shirt that read 'Register to Vote,' advising me on what to say when threatened with arrest by the highway patrolmen and deputies arrayed around the courthouse. It was a highly credible threat. And arranging to have me bailed out only three days later, which seemed a tad lengthy to me under the circumstances. My only disappointment was that my case was not the lead case in the constitutional challenge, which was successful in the Fifth Circuit, so sadly, there is no Kendall versus Mississippi in Fed II." David, by the way, as I understand, was driving around Mississippi, I mean, I do think he was rather inviting arrest, in a green VW Beetle, if I'm not mistaken, marking himself as an outside agitator. But in any case, he was arrested many times, and this really inspired him to become a lawyer. I think David originally planned to become a doctor, if I'm not mistaken. He studied at Oxford as a Rhodes Scholar, he graduated from Yale Law School, and then clerked for Supreme Court Justice Byron White before spending five years as an associate counsel at the NAACP Legal Defense Fund, litigating a variety of civil rights cases and defending countless clients on death row. And David litigated some of the most important death penalty cases, including Coker versus Georgia, which he won in the Supreme Court in 1978. And I just scared David this morning by sharing with our board that I listened to his oral argument on the train just a few days ago, but it was fantastic, it was masterful. And working on Gregg versus Georgia and the Spankel Inc. case, and many of the critical death penalty cases that you would remember from that period, David Kendall was counsel on those cases. He argued cases at all levels of the justice system, from trial courts and state Supreme Courts to the Supreme Court of the United States. And we talk about David's moral clarity, one of the coins of the realm of our death penalty work, that every person is a human being, that there is humanity in every single person. And if you have ever been in the case files and you have seen David's correspondence with his clients, and the client with whom he carried on a very long, maybe years-long game of chess, in the correspondence, he would list his move. I don't play chess, so I had to figure it out. He said, "In response to your queen's pawn, I'm queen's bishop's pawn to pawn. Wham-o. Take care. Sincerely, David Kendall." Big mistake, okay. And then, his clients would correspond back to him, their move. And David would keep, he bought all these little, kind of cheap little chessboard sets, and he would keep that in his office so he could track the moves, and they would send back their move, and then he would send back his move. It's funny, but it actually is really powerful. It's about David's ability to see the humanity of people who, even people who had done some of the worst things. And that's the David Kendall that we celebrate today. Nevertheless, he left LDF in 1978 to join Williams &amp; Connolly, where he remained a partner from 1981 to 2014, and he's continued as a senior counsel to the firm. He's litigated a variety of complex civil and criminal cases at the trial and appellate level, including jury trials in the District of Columbia, Indiana, where he hails from, Indiana, Maryland, Pennsylvania, Georgia, Alabama, and Minnesota. And from his death penalty pro bono work to the diversity he championed in his private practice, David has really modeled the very best of what lawyers working in private practice can be. We are not silly at the Legal Defense Fund, and so, we were very quick to nab David as soon as he left LDF to join our board. And he's been on our board since 1983. His counsel has been invaluable to LDF's growth and development. He's played a transformative role with his service on both our nominating and investment committees. He's been consigliere to five director councils, including me, and I so appreciate it. Many of you know that David has also, in his spare time, you know, represented President Bill Clinton and Secretary Clinton at the highest levels and demonstrated extraordinary professionalism in those roles. And when I informed Mrs. Clinton that he was being honored today, she wished that she could be here and could not, but she sent this letter, and I'll read it. It says, "Dear David, I'm so thrilled to join with your family, friends, and colleagues in congratulating you for receiving the NAACP Legal Defense and Educational Fund's Distinguished Alumni Award. Over the many years, I've been fortunate to know you and call you my friend and lawyer. From our time at Yale Law School to the present, I have always admired that you chose to begin your distinguished legal career at the NAACP Legal Defense Fund. During your five years as associate counsel, you stood on the forefront of our nation's fight for civil rights in the 1970s and battled heroically against unjust application of the death penalty. As we both know, the fight for justice and equality is more than a single life's work, but it is a privilege to play a part, and I thank you for your contributions. While I regret that I am unable to be with you for this special occasion, please know that I am sending my best wishes from afar. With friendship and warm regards, I am sincerely yours, Hillary." David Kendall, please, receive LDF's Distinguished Alumni Award.
It's a great honor to be honored, whatever the underlying merits of the honor are. But without a doubt, the people we honor today, the former clients of the Legal Defense Fund, richly deserve the recognition and commemoration they get for their courage, their grit, and their perseverance back in some very dark times. I'd also like to mention one young woman at the time, Barbara Johns, who was commemorated recently in the New York Times. She passed away in 1991, but she was one of the named plaintiffs in the Virginia case that was consolidated with Brown. When I was a staff lawyer, representing clients like this was both a great privilege and a great honor, although by the time I got there, we didn't have the overt targets, the inflammatory target of de-juris segregation. Some people in this room, I think, will remember 1972, when President Nixon's reelection slogan was "Now more than ever." Well, these are dark times for civil rights advocates, when some of the judges... Well, these are dark times for civil rights advocates, when some of the judges, as Sherilyn mentioned, don't even recognize the propriety of the Brown decision. But I do want to say, "Now More Than Ever," we should be thankful that the Legal Defense Fund is there today as kind of the Department of Justice Civil Rights Division exile, trying to defend, consolidate, and advance the cause of equal justice under law. So, Sherilyn, I thank you very much.
Very typical David, so self-deprecating, but thank you, David, and thank you to David's family for your sacrifices so that he could do this extraordinary work. Yes, David, we are the Department of Justice in exile without the government corporate rate to pay for everything. So, congratulations to you, David. And thank you for mentioning Barbara Johns as well. Barbara Johns, as many of you may know or may not know, you know, of all the consolidated Brown cases, there was one case that was really student-led, and that was because of Barbara Johns. That was the Virginia case. She led a student walkout at Moton High School in Prince Edward County, Virginia. And that student walkout really pushed LDF to file the Virginia case before we were quite ready. But it shows, for those of you who look at young people today and the activism of young people and wonder how it fits and how relevant it is, please remind yourself and please be aware that it was a young woman, 16-years-old Barbara Johns, and the students who stood with her, that pushed us into that Virginia case. And that's what young people are supposed to do. They're supposed to push us before we're ready. And so, it all works together perfectly. It's critical that there be this combination of activism. And we were so happy that The New York Times, in their overlooked section of obituaries, decided to recognize the life and contribution of Barbara Johns from Virginia. So, Brown versus Board of Education was not only fought by dedicated lawyers, but, as we just said, by brave African-American students in classrooms across the country. And actually, the struggle began well before the 1954 decision, and the fight continues long afterwards. LDF continues to carry a docket of desegregation cases that we sometimes win. We won a fantastic one in Alabama two years ago, the Gardendale case. It's hard for people to believe that these cases still continue and that they are still relevant, but they are. We continue to do work around school discipline practices. Some of you may have seen that we filed suit just a few weeks ago on behalf of four African American and Latino girls who were strip-searched by school officials in Binghamton, New York. Many of you know that we continue to work as well on issues involving New York City's specialized high school test and the lack of diversity in New York's specialized high schools. And of course, we continue our higher ed work. We are intervenors in the case challenging affirmative action at Harvard. And so, education remains a key part of our docket. And so, we're very mindful of the young people that we represent, who are on the front lines, who are facing the conditions in their schools, who are facing, as young students in Baltimore face, where we're challenging funding for Baltimore schools and facilities, where schools have no heat and students are wearing coats to school because the schools have no heat, where students can't drink the water. We used to worry about water fountains that had different, that were color-coded. Now, you can't drink the water because it's lead-tainted. These young people are on the front lines, and they always were. Today, we are privileged to have the opportunity to honor four remarkable women, who were those young women, with the Pioneer of Justice Award. Their incredible strength and bravery as the first students to overcome barriers that had previously prevented black girls and boys from receiving a quality education must be recognized for what it truly is and was, heroic. The unwavering commitment they each demonstrated as very young people in dismantling racial injustice led to the desegregation of public schools in their communities. Through the harassment and abuse some of them endured, they all remain pillars in the fight for an inclusive and just society. And so, our first recipient of the Pioneer of Justice Award is someone who is a personal hero to me, Elizabeth Eckford. Elizabeth was one of the Little Rock Nine, a group of African-American teenagers who in 1957 were the first black students ever to attend classes at Little Rock Central High School in Arkansas. On September 4, 1957, Elizabeth joined eight other African-American students in trying to enter Little Rock Central High School, a previously all-white school. The original plan was for all nine students to arrive at the school together. The night before, however, the meeting place was changed, and Elizabeth, whose family did not have a telephone at that time, was unaware of the last-minute switch. And so, 15-year-old Elizabeth attempted to enter the school alone. Under orders from the Arkansas Governor Orville Faubus, soldiers from the National Guard blocked her path and kept her from entering the school. Eventually, Elizabeth turned around and headed for her bus stop, passing an angry, not passing, through, an angry white mob that surrounded and threatened her. For two weeks, the Little Rock Nine stayed at home, and then on September 23, 1957, the students entered the school through a side door accompanied by city policemen. They were still met by a mob of about 1,000 people as they made their way into the school. And the following day, President Eisenhower took control of the Arkansas National Guard and ordered soldiers from the 82nd Airborne to protect rather than block the students. As all the city's high schools were closed the following year, Elizabeth did not graduate from Little Rock Central High School. Instead, her family moved to St. Louis, where she received her GED, attended Knox College, she attended Knox College in Illinois and received her BA in History from Central State University in Wilberforce, Ohio. While in college, she became one of the first African-Americans to work in a non-janitorial position at a local bank in St. Louis, and later, she worked as a substitute teacher in the Little Rock Public Schools. A veteran of the U.S. Army, Elizabeth has also worked as a test administrator in the Little Rock Public Schools, an unemployment interviewer, waitress, welfare worker, military reporter. Along with her fellow members of the Little Rock Nine, she was a recipient of the NAACP's Springgarn Medal, their highest medal, and of the prestigious Congressional Gold Medal, the nation's highest civilian award. In 2017, Elizabeth published an autobiography, "The Worst First Day," which wonderfully captures her profound resilience in the face of overwhelming resistance. Ladies and gentlemen, this is someone I had the honor of meeting last year in Montgomery, Alabama, and we had some time together for me to share with her how much her personal story has always meant to me. And I told her then the absolute truth, that she paved the way for me. I am from New York, but I was bused to school, first-class of students bused to school in Queens in 1968. And therefore, the story of the Little Rock Nine and Elizabeth Eckford and the understanding of what it means to be isolated in that kind of circumstance, I could see it and understand it. Our experience was not a difficult one, but to see what she went through, I always say, there are people who paid the price for us to have the experiences that we had, and she is most certainly one of them. And so, ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor to present the Pioneer of Justice Award to Elizabeth Eckford.
My life is full of irony. It is remarkable that I am here now to receive this award. Of the nine of us, there are some who are very well-known, one who is an inventor and a patent attorney, one who has been a politician and a member of the secret administration, one who has chaired the Department of Communication at a college, has been, had been a television reporter and had her own public relations company. Mine has been a very simple life. I have had very ordinary jobs. I've never had any power. I've always had low pay. So, it's really, really remarkable. And it's because of a photograph that was taken by a photographer who had been placed where they didn't think anything would happen. Thank you.
Our next two recipients of the Pioneer of Justice Award are Doris Fay Jennings Alston and Doris Rae Jennings Brewer. At the age of 13, twin sisters Doris Rae and Doris Fay were plaintiffs in a lawsuit to desegregate schools in Hearn, a small town between Houston and Dallas. In September 1947, the sisters attempted to enroll at the White Junior High School. In their elementary school years, the girls had attended the local black public school, but after graduating, their parents found that the building that housed the black junior high school and high school was uninhabited. The building had had a fire the year prior, but rather than rebuild the structure, the school board literally moved a building that had formerly been used to house German prisoners of war during World War II to the site of the black school and propped it up with used car tires, and this was to be the school for black students. I actually was, went through the file, as I was sharing with you, of the case the other day, and what the lawyers estimated was that the school district, the facilities for white students were valued at $3 million in the school district, and the facilities for black students throughout the district were valued at $300,000. That was the disparity. Sometimes when people get segregation nostalgia, right? Because there are people who say things like, you know, "We had our own schools, and it was great, and it was integration that ruined everything." And I'm sure that there were some places where that was true, but there were many places where it was not. And so, that was the disparity that was being faced in Hearn. And I should say, as I was reading the file while Thurgood Marshall was working with Spotswood Robinson, Spots, on that case, he was also preparing to argue the case challenging the South Carolina white primary. And so, he was saying, "I think I can do the depositions this week, but Monday, I gotta get to, you know, South Car-" So, there was so much going on in that period. But this move to have black students attend school in this, in the transported prisoner, German prisoner-of-war barracks outraged the black community. And that fall, the twins' father, C.G. Jennings, worked with the Hearn NAACP to file a lawsuit to desegregate the white junior high school, listing both Doris Rae and Doris Fay as plaintiffs, and they actually walked together to the school. He walked with his girls to try and register them in the school, and they were told by the superintendent that they could not register in the white school. The case went to trial the following spring with Thurgood Marshall representing the plaintiffs, and while the lawsuit was unsuccessful, the Hearn litigation was the fulcrum of Marshall's winning strategy six years later in Brown versus Board of Education. These were the cases that convinced them that there could be no separate and equal. That was not possible. Upon graduation, both Doris Fay and Doris Rae received their bachelor's degrees from Prairie View A&amp;M University, and we are privileged to represent Prairie View students along with the Norton Fulbright Firm this past year in a voting rights challenge in Waller County, Texas. A longtime educator, Doris Fay worked as a secondary school teacher for the United States Air Force General Education Development Program, for District of Columbia Public Schools, and the Northern Burlington Regional School District. In addition to her bachelor's degree, Doris Rae received her master's from the University of Delaware, and afterward, she worked as a librarian for the Colonial School District in Newcastle, Delaware. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor to present the Pioneer of Justice Award to Doris Rae Jennings Brewer and Doris Fay Jennings Alston. Keep clapping, keep clapping.
Well, I think I'm in the doghouse with my children. Because when this story came out, they said, "Mom, you never told us anything about that." Well, I was, we were young. I remember that day vividly. My father and mother took us to this school that we knew we would not be admitted to, and the lawsuit ensued from that, and it is a part of history. We were 13. When I had my own children, this was a dim memory to me, not dim, but past. One thing that doesn't, that isn't pointed out in any of the things is that when I was employed as the librarian at the Gunning Beth School in Delaware City, I integrated that staff. I was the first black one there. I spent 30 years there, very happy years. And over the years, I have encountered many, many things that were unfair, but through it all, I just knew that I had the right to be a respected individual and that no one was either worse than or better than I. And so, we accept it because of what they are. It is rewarding now to see the progress that has been made, but I say to you today, we have a long ways to go. Hello, and it's good to see you, and I'm glad to stand before you, fortunately, as age has taken its toll. And this, my handsome escort is her servant, her son, and so, he brings his aunt, and "Where did my daughter go?" Oh, he's not, my daughter, hi, that's my daughter and that's my, that's my granddaughter over there. So, we are three generations here today to say hello and thank you. And one part that my sister did not include in her narration is the fact that we always lived in an integrated neighborhood and never thought anything about it. We played together, we were in each other's houses, and their mothers saw that we had water where we needed and all that kind of stuff that parents looked at. But of course, once this integration came about, all of that changed, and we went our different ways. They walked from our neighborhood about maybe three blocks around to their beautiful brick school, and we walked across the railroad tracks to ours. And so, like, the light went on, and we had, once we started the case, we could not allow us to go even to a black school, so we had to go school away from home for a while. But we went through it, and we came back, and they told us, the school, our black school, "You have to teach them science." "What? We don't have a science teacher." So, somebody taught the science class, and they said, "Well, you know, you got to take geography." "Geography?" And so, that kind of thing went on, and the kinds of subjects that were normal and expected in the high school, they were made to put in ours. And they finally started giving us books without writings and drawings and some of the pages missing, and we finally started getting some different books that had not been used. And so, I could say that our education really began. It's been a journey, and I am happy to say that my children have gone to integrated schools and got good educations, and we were never raised to identify race, but identify people. And that's how I have tried to raise my children, because we are under God all the same. And that's how I have tried to raise my children, because we are under God all the same.
Thank you. The story that Doris Fay just told about playing together with white children in the community and then going to your separate, going to your separate schools, Thurgood Marshall took that story from the Hearn case and he used it at his oral argument in Brown. He told that story to the United States Supreme Court. He said, "I see it, I see it. They play together, they hang out together, they have no problem, and then when it's time to go to school, they have to go to their separate communities." And so this case was really important to his thinking about how to frame the issues in Brown. Our final recipient this afternoon of the Pioneer of Justice Award is Leona Tate. Much like Elizabeth Eckford and Doris Rae and Doris Fay, played a crucial role in desegregating our nation's schools, becoming one of the first African-Americans to attend a formerly all-white school in Louisiana. Just six years after "Separate But Equal" was ruled unconstitutional in Brown versus Board of Education, six-year-old Leona and two other girls, Gail Attn and Tessie Prevost, were escorted by federal marshals through a crowd of protesters on November 14, 1960 to attend McDonough 19 Public School. The three girls would later be referred to as the McDonough Three. Outraged white parents quickly took their children out of the school, leaving Leona and the other two girls as the only students in the school for the next two years. That did not stop the onslaught of hate and vitriol directed the girls' way. Throughout the school year, angry crowds would gather outside McDonough 19 in protest. The girls were constantly guarded by federal law enforcement, school water fountains were shut off, and classroom windows were covered with brown paper. Leona and her two classmates had to have recess in the school theater because the schoolyard was just too exposed and dangerous. When Leona and the girls reached third grade, they were enrolled at TJ Semm School along with 20 other black students, which created a safer environment in which they could learn. In 2009, Leona established the Leona Tate Foundation for Change, based on the principle that in order to achieve harmony among humankind, every person should be afforded equal opportunity. The McDonough 19 Public School Building, located in the historic Lower Ninth Ward of New Orleans, still stands as a testament to the struggle to make education equity a reality in that city. Through her foundation, Leona Tate plans to reopen the school as a monument, highlighting the critical role it played in the civil rights movement in New Orleans. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor to present the Pioneer of Justice Award to Ms. Leona Tate.
I want to thank first God, because without him, I don't think any of this would have happened. I want to thank LDF for having me here today, and I am so grateful to be able to meet these ladies in person. That has always been my dream. I met some of the Little Rock Nine for their 50th anniversary in Fort Smith, but I had never been able to meet Ms. Elizabeth, so I'm glad to meet her today. I'm without my two sidekicks today, so that's just very strange for me to be without them. We have a bond till today that just can't be broken. Our first day was different, quite different. Six years old in New Orleans, we had no clue what we were about to endure. When we drove up to school that morning, I thought everybody was outside waiting for the parade to come, because we knew a parade passed in front of that building. And I wanted to know why I had to go to school a mordego, and everybody else got to stand out and watch the parade. My mother said, "That's not the case." We finally got into the building, and we must have sat outside of their principal's office for quite a few hours before they'd even decided to put us in the classroom. And we sat there so long that Tessie, Gail, and I played hopscotch on the towels on the floor. So our bond began that first day of school, and it's been continuous. But we finally got placed in the classroom, but by the end of the day, we were the only three students, as she said, in that entire building, and that lasted for a year and a half. But we were comfortable, you know? We were really comfortable. Every teacher was in place. We didn't interact with anybody other than the teachers, the teacher we had, that gave us an excellent first-grade education. But now I am proud to say that the Leona Tate Foundation for Change has control of that building, and New Orleans will have its first Civil Rights Interpretive Center. And I have one of my board members with me, Ms. Rhonda Joseph, and I also have Lori Hamilton, who's with Gallagher &amp; Associates, who's the design team for the building. Thank you.
Can we give another round of applause to all of the pioneers of justice? So listen, we know it's the middle of the day, and we thought, you know, we're going to do lunch, we're going to give them awards, and then we said, "There is no way that we are breaking up this thing until we talk to these ladies." And we tried to think, "Who, who could lead this conversation sensitively and brilliantly?" And we thought of someone I've known for a number of years and who we regard at LDF as a dear friend, and we're so fortunate to, that she agreed to join us today. We asked Isabel Wilkerson to lead us in a conversation with these four women. You may know her as the Pulitzer Prize-winning journalist and the author of the New York Times bestseller, "The Warmth of Other Suns: The Epic Story of America's Great Migration." This groundbreaking book won the National Book Critics Circle's Book Critics Circle Award for Nonfiction, the Heartland Prize for Nonfiction, the Annis Field Wolf Award for Nonfiction, the Linton History Prize from Harvard University and Columbia University, the NAACP Image Award, and the Stephen Ambrose Oral History Prize, among many others. It was named to more than 30 Best Books of the Year lists, including the New York Times, The New Yorker, The Los Angeles Times, The Washington Post, and two dozen others. In 2012, the New York Times Magazine named "The Warmth of Other Suns" to its list of the best nonfiction books of all time. Isabel won the Pulitzer Prize for her work as the Chicago Bureau Chief of the New York Times in 1994, making her the first black woman in the history of American journalism to win a Pulitzer. In 2016, President Barack Obama awarded her the National Humanities Medal for championing the stories of an unsung history. Quick note, Isabel and I served on a panel along with civil rights historian Taylor Branch about a week after the November 2016 election. Oh, it was a grim time, and I was trying to put a sunny face on it, and Isabel was like, "Nope, not sunny." I remember her saying, "I believe we are entering the nadir." And I kind of knew she was right, but I just couldn't make myself accept it at the moment. She is, she is a wise visionary who really sees America, has gotten up close and understands what is happening in this country, and so I rely on her counsel and her thinking in shaping my own views about where we are and how we get to a different place in this country. If you have not read "The Warmth of Other Suns," and I'm just going to have to believe that every single person in this room has read this book, don't tell me if you haven't read it, because it's embarrassing, and you should just go read it. Get on Amazon and then delete your browser history so no one knows you just ordered And read this book. When you start reading it, you will not be able to stop. So give yourself a little bit of time. If you've got a train ride, like four hours, I mean, you can't stop. The book is soon to become a Netflix series, if I am not mistaken, to be produced by Shonda Rhimes. I mean, I'm just saying. So ladies and gentlemen, welcome Isabel Wilkerson.
This has been an incredible, overwhelming honor just to be here with you. I think that we are all humbled to breathe the same air as you today. Thank you. We have so little time, and I could sit down with you for days, but I want to just focus in on a few things. One of them is your courage and your dignity under unimaginable pressure. These things are an inspiration, not just to African-Americans, but to humanity, all of humanity. Your stories have been told by others for decades, so today I'd like to see and ask you, what would you most want people to know about what you experienced? If nothing else, what would you want people to know about what you went through?
People think that the worst was what was shown in that iconic photograph that still exists today. The local press, local newspapers did not print stories about what was happening in school. When President Eisenhower sent the 101st Airborne Division there, the first thing they did was affix bayonets to their rifles and scatter those 1,000 people in all directions. And there were soldiers, armed soldiers, on top of the building, and in the middle, Central High is five stories high, it's two blocks wide. The 101st soldiers made it possible for us to go to school, and so they are my heroes. But we were knocked about daily in school, and General Edmund Walker, who commanded both the regular army troops and the now-federalized Arkansas National Guard troops, set it up so that they were, they walked so far behind us that they could never intervene. There were some things that happened every day, and there were some things that you didn't know whether it was going to happen again. I was only scalded in the gym shower four times. We were body slammed against the wall lockers every day. It was in late spring, when they realized that Ernest Green might be the first African-American to graduate from Central, that they concentrated their energy against him. It's remarkable, I don't know how we were selected. First of all, a large number of students signed up to go to Central during spring 1957, and the superintendent said that he would make the final selection, and that those chosen had to be good students, and they couldn't be troublemakers. Well, I was not accustomed to violence in school in the 1950s until we experienced it in Central High, and the principal told us that we were to report what happened, but he wouldn't do anything if it was not verified by an adult. Some of the soldiers would report, some of them did not. I remember saying something about what had happened the day before, and I never turned, all the attacks on me were from behind. If somebody wanted to knock me down the stairs, it was from behind. I reported something one day, and the National Guardsman said he didn't see it. Well, when I, the next time somebody body slammed me against the locker, I grabbed hold of her. But she didn't behave like those organized, entitled people behaved. She didn't come to school for two days because she was afraid that she was in trouble. The National Guardsman didn't report that, and I was convinced that she was telling the truth when she said that somebody had knocked her into me because of the way she Among us was Thelma Motherschad, who had a serious heart condition. I don't know why it was that she was selected. I don't know why it was that I was selected. I was a very, very shy person. I'm not shy anymore because I constantly had to respond. But Thelma was so weak that she had missed some of the years of elementary school, and she said that every morning, my mother would say, "Thelma, you don't have to go back to that big school," but she insisted on coming every day. We were not a group. We were not organized by the NAACP. I didn't meet the leader of the NAACP until I was turned away from Central High School. But there was one class that I always looked forward to going to, and that was my speech class, the last class of the day. Why would a shy person want to go to a speech class? It was the only place where nobody said anything hateful to me during class, and where two students talked to me repeatedly every day and treated me as though I were like them.
I think that we, as humans, need that space of refuge, and it's, I'm pleased to know that you had that there. I'd like to ask Mrs. Alston, and Mrs. Brewer, and Mrs. Tate, how, what you would want people most to know about your experiences. Your beloved father is the one who took you to school in 1947 to try to integrate that school. What would you like people to know most about that day, for that experience?
When our father and mother decided that they wanted to do this thing under the auspices of NAACP and Thurgood Marshall as our lawyer, Fay and I knew the principle that they were fighting for, understood it clearly, and felt it strongly, but we did not have any fear of any of it. We did have to spend two years away from home, one in a boarding school in a little small college in Crockett, Texas called Mary Ann College, I believe it was, that had a boarding school. We spent a year there. The second year, we spent in Houston, Texas, living with my mother's uncle until the case was ended. There were some tensions in the town. My father, sometimes, I learned later, sat up at night with the rifle because of threats that he had received, and Fay and I knew none of this, because the parents, our parents didn't tell us of the dangers. And we believed fervently in what they were doing and would have followed them to the ends of the earth. And it was only in later years that we knew that many people left town, some people thought that he was threatening their lives, and even some families thought that the Jennings Twins thought they were better than anyone else. But this was, these were some of the things that came to us. We knew that there was a fight that had to be fought, and we willingly followed our parents in that fight. My sister mentioned textbooks. We lived in this neighborhood where everybody lived together and played together. It was only at schools and churches that the lines were divided and separated, and it was many years before the black schools got new textbooks. I remember so many times that when we got an old textbook, I would come back home and tell my playmate that I had got a textbook that had her name in it. And we thought it was a funny thing then, you know, she just, she didn't, so did I. But the whole thing now is that we have to understand...
But the whole thing now is that we have to understand that many battles have been fought, many have been won, many have been lost. We have come a very long way from that year when these two 13-year-olds went to a white school to register. But as I said before, the battle is not won. There are many things that still have to be solved and resolved, and we have to have the kind of courage that my father and mother had to take their children to a white school, dare to do that. And we still have to dare to do that kind of thing.
And Ms. Tate, I have been sitting here thinking about the contrast at that time of year when schools were in and our parents were out working for them. And ironically, their mothers were at home taking care of us in the neighborhood. That, I think, was a dichotomy of society that also led to a unity of the people in the neighborhood because their parents treated us just like they treated their children. And if they felt that there was something our parents needed to know, they would tell them and vice versa. And in my parents, and mostly the mothers did this, not the fathers, if our parents said something to their parents about something that they felt their children shouldn't have done, their children got the consequences of it, just like any other mother in the neighborhood. And it was just like our neighborhood with mothers who were home and mothers who were working. And the mothers who were home saw that the children who were home were okay. That changed in the years, but we didn't know how much it would change until this school desegregation really started rolling. And we were home for two years and we came back. Many of our neighborhood friends' kids were like strangers for a while because they didn't know us, and we didn't know them because our experiences had been different. The schools in, on the campus were not segregated, were not integrated. And we went to a big place like Houston, and there were all these people, "Who are these? I don't know these people in this, they don't live next door to me." I didn't even know their names. So that was a growth process, I think, for all of us to get to know that people are the people made by God. And that does not change, no matter who you are or where you are.
And Mrs. Tate, I want to ask you as well. What's the one thing for sure that you would most want people to know about what you went through?
I just want people to know the truth. It's so many times that our story was exploited and it was exploited wrong. Our children suffer in New Orleans because of the system we have now. And it's important for me to see that these types of things are brought back up into the education at school. We hear our story told in New Orleans. I can travel to every city in the school, and maybe one or two students in that entire school will know who I am. When I can travel out of state, and they'll know all about me. So my vision is to make sure that the students of New Orleans or anybody that comes through this facility will know it the right way, in a true way. And I try to tell them all the time when I speak to students, I say, "God chooses ordinary people to do extraordinary things, and you don't know where you're going to wind up." So, you know, we've done our work. It's time for you to continue this path.
I think that at this extraordinary moment, I'd like to ask you one last question and have each of you respond to this question. Given all that we are experiencing in this era as a country and as African Americans in particular, what goes through your mind when you see these videos of African Americans primarily being brutalized, often killed at the hands of authorities, names that are now hashtags or nationally known names, Tamir Rice, Eric Garner, Philando Castile? What goes through your mind when you see these things? And how do you see differences and comparisons between then and now? And what wisdom do you have to share with us on how to persevere in this time?
I remember that most days, I really didn't want to go to school. I continued to go, making myself go, because I then felt that a lot of people were depending on us. For a long time, I was not even able to talk about what happened within my family. I knew better than to tell my mother. My mother was queen of no. She was overly protective. Had she known what we were enduring, she would have withdrawn me from Central High School. I fear, I have a son, and I fear for his life. I have taught him to put his hands on the steering wheel where they would be seen, and no matter what, to follow the officer's orders. He knows that because he said that I made my kids watch documentaries. He said, "Ma, you made us political." There was, there was a difference for me personally because I never, I, my parents and I did not grow up teaching us, "That's a white man, and that's a white lady, and that's a white, these are people. This is Mrs. so-and-so, and this is Mr. so-and-so, and these are the kids," and whatever their names were. And that's the way we grew up, until they started trying to integrate the school system by saying, "You will go in the black school, and this is what you will learn, and this is what they will learn." It's the same, but it was not. First of all, they did not have qualified black teachers to teach those levels of science and geography that were in the white schools. And they say, "You have to get this." And our counselor says, "You can't go to those schools because they are not teaching you the same thing that they are teaching in the white school." So that's why we were gone for two years, a little better. And when we came back, things did change, and I personally could see the difference in the levels of teaching that were being taught. Didn't make any difference for me as far as the children were concerned, they were people I've grown up with all of my life. But then when they said, "You have to have science classes," and there were maybe two or in some cases, three students in the class, my sister, me, and a child from another family who was very... So here you are, trying to teach a mega-subject to three kids in the class in the principal's office, I understand. But that gradually changed, where they said, "We had to come back into that after we left" because they were saying, "We fixed what you left, so you have to go back into that school now." And going back into that school, we found it was really not changed, but it changed. Over the years, it changed. I remember that when the district decided to desegregate, they intended limited token desegregation by having some colored faces. They considered that desegregation. But the Little Rock District has been in court all these years, all these years, because they resisted integration. I experienced desegregation. Those who followed me experienced desegregation. They didn't begin to have integration until busing came along. And that's when a lot of private schools opened. But some of those same people who go to private schools come to Central High School for high school because they know that the competitive colleges recruit from that school. They don't come for an integrated experience, uh-uh. They come to have the privilege of taking advanced placement classes. And it's only been in recent years that more than one African American has been admitted to those classes. So desegregation is a long, long process.
I would like to contrast the experiences that I had growing up in a broken-down building with used textbooks, some classes that were in name only on the records and no real experience or classes in those, and my two children who are with me today, who had every opportunity, every privilege to go to all of the schools with all of the, everything that needed to be taught was taught. The schools were integrated, the staffs were integrated. And even then, I had to be aware and vigilant for incidents. My son, when he got to high school, had, he's a bright kid, and the guidance council wanted to put him in vocational classes because she didn't think that he was college material. And I said, "No, you won't. You would put him in academic classes, and that's where he belongs." My daughter, it was the same thing. She was an exceptionally bright kid. One day, I got called to school, and there were some other parents in the school, in their classroom with us. The teacher was there to tell us parents that our kids were disruptive and they didn't know how to behave. And when she finished talking, I said to her, "Do you mean to tell me that I had to take a day off from my job to come in here for you to tell me that you don't know how to manage your classroom?" Because that's just what she was doing. And I said, "The problem is not the children, it's the problems that you are not arising to the task that these children present to you. They need more than you are giving, and so you need to fix it. We parents don't have to do that." And even the prejudices are more subtle today, and if you are not aware of them, you miss them. Because I was in the school system, I understood a lot more of them. And so my two kids didn't get cheated, but some did. And that's a problem that we still have to face today.
Because it's still there.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Mostly not coming from the children, because children, unless they are pointed out or changed or directed another way, they like children. These are children, I'm a child, I like this child. And they just get together and don't bother about anything except, children of any race get into, because they're children and the things that they have taught at home. A lot of the problem did not start with the children in our neighborhood until they went to school because all the parents in our neighborhood knew each other, and we raised each other's children. But then they got into the segregated school systems, the teachers were not. And they continued to have this separation of ideas about how the Caucasian, the Italian, anybody, might behave as opposed to how the black American kids should behave. So they had a learning to do too. They had some education to get. And a lot of it came from the homes of parents like in our neighborhood who wouldn't allow their children to go in that direction. So consequently, they changed. Other students and other parents became aware of it, and it eventually took root. But that root had to be planted somewhere. And it was planted in neighborhoods. And there were other neighborhoods like ours, not as large and not as diverse, but there were other integrated neighborhoods. And don't ask me how we got integrated, because it was integrated ever since I knew it. So I guess it was handed down from generations in our families who owned the property in the first place. Because they look at you, look at us, and, "You live on all that property over there? Well, what are you doing? Where'd you get it from?" We've always had it. And I didn't understand what they were talking, "What do you mean? Where'd you get yours from?" The only thing I can figure out about it is that was a heritage that was passed down from our parents to us and to us down the road. Because the parents respected our parents and recognized that, for their children, "This is Mr. Jennings, not C.G., the way we call them. He's an adult." And that's the way they were taught. And that's the way we grew up. And they didn't learn anything different about that until they got outside the community. And that's where the world began to change them. And it's the world that's going to have to change the world.
We are unfortunately running completely out of time. I'd like to ask Mrs. Tate if you might have the last word on how we connect what we've learned from the past to where we are today, and what wisdom you might want to share with us about that?
What I know intimately, what brings me is that things are so open now. You know, I ask all my students, all my youngsters to choose every opportunity that's open for you. The doors are open, you don't have to turn back for anything. But just stay focused on what you need to stay focused on. Leave the negativity alone. Vote.
Thank you so very much.
If we don't, they need to know that we are regressing, but it's going to take them to bring this world back.
Thank you for that. Thank you so very much.
I urge all of us here today to remain vigilant. Our battles have been fought, we have made progress, but there is still much left to do. Let's do it. Thank you.
And on that note, thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you.
It's been an honor.
Thank you for having me.
Beyond belief. Thank you.
I want to thank Isabel Wilkerson for leading this conversation, and I want to thank each of our pioneers for justice, for speaking so transparently and openly with us, for giving us the charge to remain vigilant, to vote, to remember one another's humanity. So important in these very difficult times. This has been such an inspirational program, and so appreciate this conversation. So can we have another round of applause, please? We're going to ask you to remain. Please remain in your seat. Please remain. Please remain. Oh, please remain. So please remain just for one moment. I'm going to turn the farewells over to our Associate Director Counsel, Janaye Nelson. I do want to make sure that I thank our team led by Samantha Watson, who organized this entire... entire event. She worked so hard, working with each of our guests, making sure that everyone was comfortable, that the accommodations were made, that this room was set the way we wanted it to be, and really working on this program so effectively. I also want to thank our communications team for doing such a great job of putting this out there. I take very seriously people knowing what we do and also knowing about what we have done. I set the goal this morning that Brown versus Board must trend on Twitter today. But I'm serious. We have to stop being so humble that we don't compel America to recognize what it owes us and what it owes these women who have made this kind of contribution to transformation in this country. So I thank them, but I really thank our team for the hard work that it takes to put together an event like this that is so inspirational and can carry us forward. So thank you all very much. And now I'm proud to welcome to the stage Janaye Nelson, LDF's Associate Director Counsel.
Thank you, Sherilyn, and thank you so much, Isabel, for moderating that powerful, powerful conversation. I don't know about the rest of you, but I am actually just overcome with humility and gratitude for all that you've done to transform this country. Thank you so much. I want to thank Isabel for sharing our stories in her wonderful book, and you all for making history and sharing your stories with us today. As Sherilyn said, we often don't tell our stories loudly enough, and I'm grateful that you were able to be here today and allow us to honor you and for you to do that with us. So I'd like to close today by once again underscoring the importance of Brown versus Board of Education. I think what I love most about Brown is that it is emblematic of what individuals like these heroic women, who were young girls at the time, institutions like the Legal Defense Fund, courts, can do together to transform society. Brown is just the perfect example of that, of the coalescence of different powers, the power of law to bring people together to transform civil society. And each of our honorees has worked in different critical ways to make our country more closely resemble the ideals of our Constitution. So I want to thank all of them, including our board member, David Kendall, who has dedicated his life to advancing racial justice as well. Brown has forever changed the contours of our democracy and our society. It gave birth to a broadened doctrine of equal protection under the Fourteenth Amendment, and it changed how Americans interacted with one another, how we view each other, how we see each other's humanity. It was through the sacrifice and bravery of young students and their parents and their communities, who also suffered the backlash of their bravery, that allowed our nation to turn a monumental page in its history. They were true pioneers of justice, and we, again, are so proud to have had the opportunity to honor them today. Without question, Brown transformed our country as it concerns racial equality, but we have not transcended the problem of race. And it is quite likely we may never transcend it. That's why institutions like the Legal Defense Fund and our many civil rights colleagues who are in the audience today are so important. The work of racial equality, even if we achieve it, will always require work to sustain it. And if this moment teaches us nothing else, it teaches us that progress is not promised without perseverance and persistence. I want to remind us of something that Thurgood Marshall said in the midst of a celebration after Brown. He said, in a group of many people who were thrilled with the achievement of Brown, and rightly so because they had toiled so hard, but he said, "Let us not fool ourselves. The fight has just begun." And there's no better evidence of that than what we're seeing now in terms of the backlash against Brown and its principles. The more than two dozen executive nominees who have refused to acknowledge the principle of Brown. What we are seeing today is a lack of celebration of this transformative decision, and this demands urgent action to prevent the federal judiciary from being filled with judges unwilling to uphold the rule of law and equal justice. Every day, LDF fights to secure access to quality educational opportunities for all children. From our ongoing litigation to make real Brown's promise of education equity, to our defense of race-conscious admissions in the nation's top public and private universities, our challenge to high-stakes testing, our disruption of the school-to-prison pipeline, and discriminatory disciplinary actions, we are advancing education equity every day. So we thank all of you and our honorees and our sponsors, especially our crusader-level sponsor, Diageo, for supporting our work and being partners in this fight. We look forward to seeing you again next year as we celebrate Brown's 66th anniversary and as we celebrate the Legal Defense Fund's 80th anniversary in 2020. So thank you again for joining us, and please give another round of applause to all of our honorees tonight. Thank you.